All right.
You know what?
Move, move to approve the consent calendar for December 20th, 2023 in the amount of $8,086.23.
So here a motion or second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Right.
Now we've.
Now I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 6, 2023 as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have, we'll do Candace. All right, thank you. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. And let's see. And we did the consent calendar?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so the, going to old business. The first item is discussion of possible action on the Cheney Dock fishing leases subcommittee. Has a subcommittee had a chance to review and does it have a report? What is the status?
Shouldn't we have comments from the public?
I think you already did that.
On what?
Oh, okay, there were no comments?
No.
Yes.
I asked the delegations and there were none, yeah.
The subcommittee has not met.
Okay.
Or had any discussion.
All right, so why don't we just table that to the next meeting then? We'll move that.
Who's on that subcommittee, just so I?
I think it's Dawn, Roseanne, me.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll just carry that over to our next.
Before we move off of that, should we put an email together or something just to get everybody talking about it?
Yeah, I mean, you can do, after the.
Why don't we discuss this at the end of the meeting, after the adjournment?
Yeah, and you can work out the arrangements to get together.
Okay.
The next item is discussion of possible action. Can I get DOT master municipal agreement?
Okay. Do the motion?
Yeah.
Move the following. Resolve to authorize the first selectman, Daniel R. Cunningham, to sign in the name and on behalf of the town, the master municipal agreement for construction projects in the form presented to the Board of Selectmen at its December 20th, 2023 meeting.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, I'll go to Jason. Let's, any discussion? I know that I've discussed it with Joe Burgawa and he's reviewed it and has assured me that there, there's nothing, there are some new items, but nothing that is of great concern. It's more housekeeping. And this is sent to all the municipalities that are about to approve it.
I have one question.
Yes.
Beginning with the first paragraph of that, just that commentary, beginning with hello. Six years, six lines down, it begins with Connecticut DOT.
Wait, where, where are you, Roseanne, I lost.
Okay, the memo starts with hello.
Hello.
First paragraph is one, two, three, four, five, six lines down, which begins with in capital letters, C T D O T. Okay, so I'm going to read this sentence. This received, result, excuse me, this revise, uh, ten year, ten year term agreement is intended to replace the previously consummated MMAC, which was executed between Connecticut DOT and the municipality in February of 2024. We haven't had February 2024 yet, so that must be a typo.
Yeah, I saw that too.
Okay, so previously consummated, which was executed between Connecticut DOT and the municipality in February of 2024. So that can't be previously.
2014, the ten year.
So it's just simply a typo.
It's a typo, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was a document from 2014.
It expires.
Yeah, so it went ten years would be, yeah.
Okay, so as we're going to have to officially approve this, then we should have that corrected.
Um, no, that's, that's just a summary, that's not part of what we're.
The agreement's right here, that's the memo, what they wrote.
Well, they had a agreement coming in email.
There was an email.
Oh, here it is, all right.
Yeah, you're approving the agreement, not the emails.
Did you see it? Did you find it?
That was just.
Yeah.
Okay, you got it.
Okay, so in the actual agreement, the date is correct?
Yes, just, the agreement doesn't, yes, the agreement doesn't have 2014, it's the new agreement. So, yes, it doesn't reference 2014.
So this is then, for the next 10 years?
Correct.
And, and they made changes to it to, to make it consistent with?
In the last 10 years, all it.
Changes and.
All the federal stuff had to be put in here.
Right, so they've updated it. So basically, they've updated the previous agreement and they want us to ratify it and agree to it.
Correct.
Okay, as long as this is not the official.
No, this is, this doesn't, this is just describing it, so that isn't the, the agreement.
So. So.
No, hang on.
It did say that they added section four, so I just want to bring it to everybody's attention. That, hold on, I just have to find it. It's on page 26.
Of the agreement?
Yeah, let me just get there.
Let me take your time. Yeah.
So, so what it added in 1.14, which I just want to make sure that people are aware of, is that it talks about affirmative action goals. And the original contract in, was it 2014, did not have that. So I just want to make sure that if you're going out to bid or you, whatever it is, that you follow these terms.
When it comes to DOT projects, yes.
Okay.
It's, that's not town projects, that's projects that are DOT funded, DOT numbered projects have to, they always have all those provisions in them.
Oh, they do, okay.
One thing also.
This is added, so.
One thing, well, because I'm looking at Article four.
Yeah.
One of the things that's added in the last 10 years is they're allowing the opportunity now for municipalities to administer DOT projects. And, and we're actually doing that right now. We're moving forward with Colony Road and Fairhaven Road.
Okay.
So that's, that, that provision wasn't available 10 years ago. So that's actually what, not for East Line, but in general, it's an opportunity so towns can actually get projects going quicker by managing themselves through federal dollars. So that's why they had to put all these provisions to lay out how that happens and that's, that's what's in here. So it's, it's new conditions, but that's the way, that's the game plan of what they're doing. And that's being called out by fed, the feds and the state.
Okay.
So this is not related to any town projects, town paving thing. This is DOT projects on, that, that they're doing with DOT numbers, federal numbers.
Okay, so my next question then is, because I did read it, but it sounds like to me that they, federal group puts in money and then the town puts in money and then like a certain percentage for these projects?
No.
No.
What happens on these projects is the federal government pays 80%. The state pays 20%, the town pays nothing.
Okay, all right, understood.
That's, that's, so, yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay, so that's why we have to jump through all these hoops to get the money.
But by, by taking their money, we have to follow their rules and they sent us the rules. They weren't looking for us to send back and say, can you revise this and that? These are the federal rules.
Got it.
They're just, we need to, as town of East Line, sign off them to be able to accept money to, to, and we have projects in the pipeline right now to do this, as I said.
So my, I just, what I brought this up is I just want to make sure that we follow it. You know, this is something extra.
We will.
You know, that they added it.
Well, there's, there's three projects. There's also, we're about to get a low SIP grant for East Pat. That will be a federal project as well. So anytime you do a federal project with federal and state monies, you have to follow this playbook and we will.
Okay, perfect.
And we're, what we're doing, we're saying that we do agree to follow.
Yes.
The new rules and it's up, I mean, it's been 10 years, so all the changes and the laws and various things have been incorporated into the current document and we're agreeing to live, live up to that.
These are the rules and we are the playbook, but also it tells you exactly what you have to do. So we're just gonna, when we get into projects, we're, okay, this is what we do.
This is what we do, okay.
It's the playbook and we will follow.
And that's the latest one.
That's exactly, okay.
So that's.
Great.
Good.
I agree that this was confusing because when I read it, I began to think that we accept federal money and that takes us out of the loop for getting any additional state money.
That's not correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is, to be eligible to get federal and state funds, you have to have a municipal agreement with them. And as I said, we have three projects coming down the pipe. We haven't had any that I'm aware, but this is, so it's good that we're getting federal dollars to, to improve East Line infrastructure, but we have to play by their rules.
Definitely, yeah.
If absent our agreeing to it and ratifying it, we wouldn't be able to.
We wouldn't be able to get the money.
Yeah.
I mean, we're talking probably about probably $7 million worth of work.
Yeah.
Good.
Great.
Okay.
Thanks for pointing with that out, thank you, I think we have. Any other questions or concerns? All move it, do we, those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any objections? The motion carries. Thank you. Now, we're, uh, let's see. We can have a presentation by Parks and Rec on Darrow Pond.
Hello, Dan. Congratulations to you and to the board members, both the incumbents and newly elected. My name is Todd Donovan. I've been on the Park and Rec Commission since 2019. I was born and raised here in East Line and continue to live here in town while raising three children with my wife Erin, who was a school teacher in the Montville School System. As well as being a commissioner, I sit on the advisory board for the Miracle League of Southeastern Connecticut. I'm a youth coach. I'm a new business owner here in town. And since taking on that venture, I recently stepped away from being the fundraising coordinator for East Line Little League and the president of East Line Youth Basketball. I'm very proud of where I come from and my passion is the well-being of this town and providing the residents of this community with the same privileges previous generations afforded me. As many of you know, the Darrow Pond property has been a topic of discussion for many years. And during a commission meeting in 2020, I received permission to create a subcommittee to gather as much information as I could from the public while doing my due diligence in the background in the effort to revitalize a very underutilized and underappreciated piece of town property. In the end, my goal is to preserve and to enhance, not to develop. Here's a brief timeline of the past three years. In 2020, we had our first meeting, which was informal and informational. It was virtual and we continued to meet for the next five or six months more frequently. Late in 2020, the Park and Rec Commission voted in favor of creating the Darrow Pond Subcommittee, which I am the chairman of. January of 2021, with assistance from former director Dave Putnam and recreation supervisor Mike McDowell, we created an online survey for residents to fill out. Some of the questions included what type of things people would like to see at Darrow Pond? Have they ever been to Darrow Pond? What town are they from? What age are they? What activities do they like and how, how frequent do they visit Darrow Pond if ever? In total, we received more than 600 responses. All of this information was shared with the subcommittee and the landscape architects and that information we gathered was ultimately the driving force behind the design of the master plan. In January of 2021, a memo was written by Dave Putnam and sent to the Board of Selectmen asking to designate the control of Darrow property to the Park and Rec Commission. On June of 2021, as the weather heated up, we had our first walkthrough as a committee at Darrow Pond. In January of 2022, the Park and Rec Subcommittee, excuse me, Parks and Rec submitted a request to the ARPC for $25,000 of the ARP aid to fund the master plan for the Darrow Pond project. In June of 2022, a master plan RFP was sent to five landscape architects. And in August of 2022, the town chose an architect for the Darrow property, which was FHI Studio out of Hartford, Connecticut. On October of 2022, the Board of Selectmen voted and passed, Darrow Pond was officially under the jurisdiction of the Parks and Rec Department. In November of 2022, the master plan was underway. In January of 2023, FHI presented a preliminary plan for the Darrow Pond project to the Darrow Pond Subcommittee. In March of 2023, the Subcommittee did another walkthrough with FHI Studios and a contractor to the Wildlife Management Institute from Connecticut DEEP. April of 2023, the Subcommittee met with FHI for the final time to approve the final design. So we thought that in May of 2023, a public hearing took place here at, at the community center, uh, over at the community center where we had a few dozen participants. In July of 2023, we did have our final in-person meeting with FHI Studio and we spoke about last minute tweaks and also about traffic suggestions made by FHI Studio. In August of 2023, we presented our master plan to the Park and Rec Commission. In September and October of this year, we informally started dotting our i's and crossing our t's and finally, finally told Phil and his team at FHI Studio that we were done. In November of 2023, just last month, we met for the last time as a committee prior to this meeting and strictly went over the prioritization of the amenities we would like to add to the Darrow Pond property and identified responsibilities in specific areas for specific members to assist and manage the build out for the key components of the project. And finally, in 2023, we are here today. Our process in the Subcommittee was thorough. It was collaborative and it's been very fluid for the past three years. Ultimately, through the public's input and through the work of both our Subcommittee and FHI Studio, we believe this master plan does a wonderful job of providing our residents with recreation, education and conservation. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce the project lead from FHI Studio, Phil Barlow.
Thank you. So thank you. As Todd said, my name is Phil Barlow. I'm a landscape architect with FHI Studio. And I'll go through these slides pretty quickly and get to the, to the concept and to the design, but we can go back to these if there's questions. So FHI Studio is landscape architects, planners, engineers and biologists and scientists. And we all worked on the project in one way or the other. As Todd said, we had a number of monthly meetings. We talked with the advocates from the community and we had our DEEP site walk. So this is the, the 300 acres. The 100 acres is defined in the purple here and that's the area outside the easement. We were able to work with an on-the-ground survey provided by Bob Favner. So that was a great help in coming up with our plan and knowing what's on the ground. The outside edge is the additional 200 acres, which does have the easement. So we went through a number of environmental and conservation feasibilities and constraints. We all know the property here. We know the property's been used for a lot of things in the town, everything from a woodlot back in the colonial times to a farm, to the proposals for golf courses and housing and this sort of other things. This is the survey that Bob provided, which was a huge help. As Bob mentioned, also a lot of work was done prior to our involvement by the previous committees and they deserve a lot of credit for the plan that we came up with. It is a unique property, a lot of environmental opportunities, a lot of wildlife, a lot of unique vegetation. And among the vegetation is a New England cotton tail rabbit. And that, that's, I, species is of concern to the state of Connecticut and we took that into our plans with great constraint. Some of the previous studies that were done, Darrow Pond open space and the forest storage ship, storage ship plan, again, all went into the informing our plan. Todd mentioned we had DEEP biologists on site. They were a big help, a lot of great input into how they saw that the site should be preserved and/or developed. And FHI Studio also has biologists that weighed in on the plan. This is the survey that was mentioned. This has specific uses that were requested by the community. And as you can see, hiking, cycling, disc golf and nature preservation were first and foremost in their minds and that's what we concentrated on. Disc golf. Let's go back. All right, so here's the plan that evolved over a period of a year. As Todd said, we think it's equal parts conservation, recreation and education. To orientate you, Darrow Pond is here. This is Smith Hill at this point. The tower is here. And the heavy line is 100 acres where most of our work occurred. And then this lighter edge is the 200 acres. So looking at first at the conservation piece. This area in the center is the New England cotton tail habitat area. So that was preserved. We decided early on that nothing would be done there and that would be pure preservation. A second important habitat area is this meadow area, just west of Darrow Pond and outside the 100 acres, but just, just past it. But if, if you've been to the property, you know, that's that open meadow that again is kind of a unique habitat for New England. A lot of unique bird, insect and a ground animal activity in that area. A third unique area ecological wise was an area of pitch pines. So pitch pines are not, they're rare in Connecticut and there's not many stands of them. And so it's important that we preserved that and that's, that's in the area of five. We also preserved or plan to preserve all what we call the legacy trees. Again, if you've been out there, you know, there's a lot of very old trees and those would be preserved in any development. The community wanted an expanded trail system and we've given them that in this plan. If you look at the plan, the dark lines, the heavy dark lines are existing trails. And then the red dashed line is an expanded trail system. So what that does for us, it gives us more trail opportunities, of course, but also provides a couple loops. And that was an important factor in the community's request that these trails aren't just out and back, but we create some loop systems so that you have that variety. You can go out and back in different ways. So this is the biggest loop coming through the 200 acres. Joins up with the Goodwin Trail, which of course is a very important resource for this property. We've made some connections to connect the existing trails in several places. Here is a new section, takes us through some wetlands perhaps. And we have the thought of perhaps a boardwalk through that area so kids and adults can experience that environment, the wetlands area and while still protecting it. And then the third system is a trail system that comes down that hillside just north of the parking lot. We think that can actually be an accessible walkway to meet ADA standards so that people with mobility challenges could get down there also. That would loop down the hill and then at the bottom of the hill by the pond, we envision that as an elevated boardwalk type system. That's out of the wetlands, but it's a very marshy area, so it would probably need to be elevated. Second or next large piece of the proposal is a disc golf course. And that's in this area to the south of the property. I know we have some advocates here tonight that are in favor of that, but that's, we see that in other communities, disc golf, very popular, getting very low impact to the environment and to the property. So we think that's a terrific use for this property again, and it's something that the community very much wants. Some other features. The parking lot is here, that would be expanded. To the north of the park, parking lot, we're proposing what we're calling a natural playground. That would be a playground that has more natural features, less plastic, less bright colors. Could actually be tree stumps, branches, natural elements. And if not that, something that looks that way. So a little bit different type of play activity than perhaps you've seen in town. We're envisioning a jump line. And if you know what a jump line is, it's for mountain bikes, basically a practice area for the younger kids and the less experienced bike riders. So that was something that also came out of the community meetings. The mountain bike community asked for that and that's something that we could, we could put into the plan. In this area at the peninsula, we've proposed an outdoor classroom with maybe perhaps a small building, something open air, a place for teachers to take classes and gather in that area. We're thinking perhaps a small dock that could extend into the water, certainly not for boats, but for, again, children to get out into the water, take water samples and observe fish and wildlife. We're envisioning a pollinator garden just north of the parking lot. And I think that's it. I think that's, that's our proposal. I miss anything? Yeah. So we think it's a great plan. Again, as you've heard, we think it's a plan that balances a whole lot of things for this property, preserves the natural environment and preserves the unique aspects of the site. Glad to ask, answer their questions and talk about any piece of this in more detail if you like.
Start, Roseanne, did you?
Well, I'll start off and then I'll give myself a break and give him a break and then I'll come back. Because I've got about 20 things. So I'm very familiar with the property, including being on the committee that advocated to get the Darrow Pond property to begin with. So I frequently go up there. And of course, one of the things about the property that makes it fantastic, which most communities would die to have, the concern is overdevelopment. And oftentimes I go up there in the, in an afternoon. Sometimes it's only two or three cars. It's quiet, it's peaceful, I can get out and walk around, I can relax, I can breathe. To me, are all of these things going to go on at the same time? I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of 100 cars up there at a time.
We're thinking, the parking lot would be 30 cars. And we think everything's pretty low impact. So you might have disc golfers and you might have hikers. You might have some children playing on the playground.
What would be the surface of the parking lot?
Probably gravel. I mean, those details haven't been worked out, it's a concept, but probably an, a pervious surface.
No asphalt.
What we envisioned, I wouldn't think, no.
And what is the anticipated time for build out? Is this going to be done in gradual stages?
Yes.
Gradual phases?
Yes.
And what would you anticipate as the total build out time for completion of all the activity spots?
Yeah, I'll defer to Jerry. Hi there. Good evening, Jerry Locke and the Parks and Rec Director. So the Darrow Pond Subcommittee did meet and divided the master plan up into essentially two phases. We'll be requesting funding for phase one, which is mostly dealing with the trails, the disc golf course, the outdoor classroom, and a couple of those features primarily at first. So in, in the budget requests you'll see here in a couple of months, you'll have. In the budget requests, you'll see here in a couple months, you'll have Phase One. And then depending on how that goes, Phase Two would follow a year, two years, or sometime later down the line, where we would be working on things like the parking lot, the natural play area, and some of those other items.
So the trails, the existing trails that are there, as you know, they've been upkept mostly by volunteers, sometimes not to the greatest walkability, but depending on volunteers. You anticipate hiring additional personnel to maintain the property?
So, yes, I think there's a couple of pieces to answer that question. As Todd mentioned, there are advocates on the Darrow Pond Subcommittee that will step forward and continue to advocate for various things. We have really good relationships with people who are currently managing the trails at Darrow, and we expect them to continue to do that. The second part of the answer to the question is, you know, we wouldn't be hiring somebody specifically to go maintain Darrow Pond, but there is an increase, there would be an increase in maintenance for the Parks and Rec Department that we would be looking to address in, in our operational budget in coming years as well.
Currently, there are no motorized vehicles on any of the trails. Will that continue to be the case? As I heard you say something about jump biking or?
Yeah. We do anticipate allowing human powered biking, but not motorized biking, no. Or motorized ATVs or?
Old fashioned pedal biking.
Correct.
Okay. Currently, there is no boating allowed on the lake? There's no motor boats, no boating is allowed? Will that continue to be the case?
There are restrictions for boating on the pond, and we have no intention of offering any type of boating activity there.
Okay, because I would be concerned about oil spillage and other potential things. All right, certainly, one of the big things is the access road to that point. Mustaway Road is a very old road, it's got a very poor roadbed to it, and I can't picture that road holding up under this amount of traffic, even if it's staggered traffic. And that's a, I don't know that we, I don't see how we could widen that road without using eminent domain to take some of the property, some of the adjoining property.
So FHI Studios did present to the Subcommittee a proposed modification to Mustaway Road that would alleviate, we think, a lot of those traffic concerns, but it's a bit premature at this point to, to go forward with that. But there are things that we can do. The Public Works Department as well assisted us on, in developing or reviewing the FHI proposal for traffic patterns and whatnot. But you do have a concern, and I think that that is something that would be addressed with the traffic authority, with the town, and through Public Works, and to make sure that it was safe.
Well, it's not only a concern about that, it's that when you go down that road, you feel like you're taking a trip into the past, which you are. It's a very narrow road, very limited crossway, and so what, so it sort of sets the scene for you going into this undeveloped area. And I would be very concerned if we're looking at a wide, two lane road leading into that area, because I think it takes away from the natural.
The proposal that we have does not widen the road, but there are other things that we can do that help mitigate any kind of safety or traffic control issues.
Okay. Let me see, could you tell me what the acronym for the studio that you worked with? What does that acronym stand for?
FHI.
FHI? Is that a letter?
Fitzgerald Holiday Incorporated.
Okay, and where is that located?
Hartford.
Welcome to town. So I just have a couple of other things on my list. Obviously, I've had a lot of time to think about this, and I'm very passionate about it, and the property, and the uniqueness of it. And I don't want to see it overdeveloped. On the other hand, I want people to be able to enjoy it. But when I'm up there frequently and I'm walking the trails, I see people from many, many other areas of the region. And for the most part, but for the most part, it's still fairly local. So if the number of activities here, I think it's, it's a bit concerning. I'm a little bit more relieved that this is going to be done in stages, rather than being all done at once, so that we can evaluate how things are going. I'm not totally opposed to it, I'm just concerned.
Mrs. Hardy?
I think, thank the committee for all of the work that they've done and for volunteering their time, and I appreciate it. And Todd, I'm glad I had you do those oral reports.
Thank you. The concerns that you have, believe me, we're all on the same page. The public is, the committee is. In fact, I think when a lot of people came to the public meeting, they were expecting us to come up with this big development plan that I think you also are afraid of. A lot of the stuff that we're talking about, believe it or not, you won't even, you won't even notice is there. It looks like a lot on that map, but really, that's why we're sticking towards the words of enhancement. This is not, this is not development in any way, shape, or form. It's strictly enhancement. Some of the things that you may consider development, like we talked about, the outside educational area, that's down near the peninsula. Again, it's nothing more that, that would bring something to the, to the children and to the town. No way, shape, or form, do we consider this development, nor does anybody who's been involved in this process feel, no problem.
I know you've worked very hard, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Jason, any additional concerns?
Yes, I'm just curious about the outdoor education classroom, the open classroom that you described. Are we talking about some kind of pavilion with a concrete block?
I think at the end of the day, we're open for anything. We haven't really gotten down to the concepts yet in regards to what that, that part of development would look like. I think what we did here was we identified certain parts of the pond on the right-hand side with this legend here, where we would have or propose to have boards, educational boards, like we do on the boardwalk, per se. So when people walk through, Ms. Hardy, you may see that, but at the end of the day, we hope that people stop and read those things, because, you know, at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is recognize how beautiful this park is and what it has to offer. So in regards to the educational area, again, when we get there, you know, I guess in my mind, I picture like logs on the ground, you know, flattened, so kids can sit on them in a little bit of a, you know, like a tiered, that, it's kind of got a natural slope to it as you go down to that peninsula area anyway. I guess that's really what we mean. If there's a covering, it would be, again, something natural.
Yeah, I think we all envisioned something very simple, you know, at most a pavilion, you know, with a, with a roof, so the kids could get underneath it, and some picnic tables.
If any of you have ever been up there, up a little bit to this, this direction up here, there's like a little Cub Scout camp. And when you, when I think of educational area, if you ever get up there, it would look similar to that.
Have you thought, kind of the logistics of transporting students up there? I mean, you, you would have to take several buses up. I would assume that there would be enough space to kind of get them in there, turn them around, get them back out.
Well, that'd be, the parking lot would be big enough for a bus to pull in and transport students, they'd probably go somewhere else to park, but we don't envision, you know, we don't, we've envisioned the children walking down to the pond from the parking lot.
They need the exercise, they can walk.
So this is not really, I mean, we received a memo from Jeff Newton, Superintendent of Schools, but it doesn't seem like this is really kind of a partnership with, you know, Eastline Public Schools and Parks and Rec.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that our intent was that, making that proposal right away. You know, I mean, there's other organizations that could use this as well, you know, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, just, you know, I have children that I know would love it. You know, I think at first, it was really just propose the enhancements to the property, and ultimately, you know, see where that goes.
Okay. So, excuse me for not knowing this, but jump line for mountain bikes, can you just?
Yeah, that, yeah, so I knew, I knew that was gonna make people cringe. So, so what we've all learned, because, you know, we're all learning about the different components of, of the Darrow Pond that we would like to do, is when mountain, before mountain bikers get on their trails, and excuse me if there's bikers in here and I don't speak correctly on this, they want to practice the physical activities, they may come up, they may have to hop over a stick on the ground or a log on the ground. So it's basically like a little, it's a practice area for mountain bikers.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what Phil referred it, referred it.
Jump line.
A jump line, yeah, that was scary. I was thinking of a zip line. No, it's just a little practice area for them to ride around in, maybe hit the brakes.
I think I've got an image.
I'm thinking the Olympics, these guys jumping around.
No, 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 yeah, 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 no, not at all.
Okay.
Oh, there it is, whoops.
Oh, I see, okay. And is it, well, the next question then becomes, is that going to be near where people are hiking?
It would be, it would be off to the side a little bit, separated.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, just so, you won't want any conflict.
Sure.
Okay, so my other question is, would people be able to bring, like, their pets there? To, like, walk their dogs there, or is that?
That's for Jerry.
Or would dogs be on leash, off leash, or not permitted?
Yeah, we would expect pet owners to be able to utilize the park. They're using it right now, and I don't expect that that would change. If you have animals under control, I think that's, that's what we would be expecting. We do have concerns from Connecticut deep, you know, those, those sensitive wildlife habitats with nesting birds, or with the New England Cotton Tail or whatever, dogs off leash can, can, you know, upset wildlife. So that's, as Todd was mentioning, the signage and things like that, would be our hope that we would be able to, you know, get people to self-monitor themselves and keep their pets under control, and keep them in areas where, you know, along the main trails, for example, and not through the sensitive wildlife areas where they might disrupt things. So, but yes, pets would be welcome there as long as they're, you know, under control.
So under control, does that mean like on a leash?
That's, that's, there's a state law on that, and I don't want to interpret state law here tonight, but yes, I think it, state law says under control.
You can buy any dog, that means you're putting again.
For many people, it does mean a leash, yes.
Okay, that's, yeah, okay, let me see if I have anything else. Oh, you said that the Public Works would be, like, maintaining the property? Is that something that? That's what I heard, that's what I heard from you, Joe.
No, Public Works, at the time, we would perhaps be building the parking lot, I could see Public Works being involved, or dealing with the traffic control pattern, or, you know, doing something with the street, I think Public Works would be involved. But maintenance of the property would be Parks and Rec.
Okay, all right, I just heard that, and that's why.
We, we've also, we.
We weren't a main.
No, no, Joe.
We've met with just about every group in regards to what activity we're proposing, and what we've come to learn is many of these groups work through volunteers. We did an online presentation, well, because it was COVID, with somebody that develops a disc golf course, let's say. There are communities, there, they are large communities throughout the state, but I've been to many of them, and again, when I, when I drive up, it's not like you're driving up to a baseball or a football game. It's very passive, it's very relaxing, and those communities as well, they're volunteers. Now, we would obviously have to put funds into building the course, which would be, again, very something simple, just a platform and a couple of the, he showed a goal, again, something you may not notice when you walk through, you know, but ultimately, it's, the people that use the course take care of the courses if it's their own.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's disc golf right there.
That's disc golf. That is, that is really the only thing that's, other than a small platform, that you would consider, like, where you tee off. In many of those cases, it's, we'll use stuff that's already there. It may be a rock, it may be a sloped area where we, we throw off from the top, but the goal is to use the topography as best we can to create the golf course.
Thank you.
Okay, so first, I want to thank you for your presentation. I think you guys have done a fantastic job. I was able to listen in on my drive from Colchester and Bacon Academy to get here. You know, I appreciate the education, the conservation part of this, and really, the due diligence of keeping it as natural and not, I don't take this plan as overdevelopment or development in the way of buildings, over-excessiveness, or anything of that nature. I take it more as utilizing the natural beauty of this area, and really kind of just polishing it up and giving it life, a little bit more life, maybe. I'm excited about it, I'm excited about every single aspect of it. The only question that came up for me was, is there an increase of liability on the town of anything in, in that nature? Is there going to be anything like that, because we're going to have people and doing certain things up there? Is that going to be an increase of liability on us?
So the, I think our insurance carrier would say something to the effect of, you know, if the town is going to do this, you know, the town has every right to do this, and it's not going to increase our exposure, but what, what we do up there, let's do it well, let's do it the right way, and in that way, you don't. If we, you know, if we don't do things well, or we, we cut corners or do something like that, we may end up with a, with an injury or something that, that puts the town at risk, but it's the same as any ball field that we have, the beaches, you know, the Liberty Green or anything else. I mean, we'll maintain it, and people will enjoy it, and it really wouldn't be anything out of the ordinary for the town.
Okay, I think it's going to be exciting for a lot of our community members.
Finance Director.
And then, of course, the biking part of that. I know that we have a mountain biking club here in town, and all sorts of things. I think people are really going to enjoy it.
So Mr. Cunningham and I have a meeting tomorrow, I believe, at 10 or 11 with Kerma, so we'll follow up next meeting. And I'm sure with the mountain bikes, there's probably a, a letter someone has to sign or a release form or something like that, but we'll cross that bridge when it happens.
Yeah, this is exciting stuff, this is great.
Todd, nice job. That's kind of what a committee should do, over the long stretch of time, to have the documentation. My only concern is now that you're exposing Darrow Pond, I'll go back to what Ms. Hardy said, is that it's going to probably come on more on Parks and Recs, so just be prepared of, I want to reserve a tee time to raise money for the Miracle League for a golf tournament. Guys have a couple beers while there's a fourth grade Polywog class going on on the peninsula. So just consider the time management, it's going to take place.
I think it's fair, I, I think until you're up there, you, very fair point, but until you're up there, you don't realize how big it actually is. The disc golf course in particular, just because it was brought up, is, it's going to be quite a walk from the parking lot. Most of them that I do play, you get out of the car, you know, you walk maybe 20 or 30 yards and it's hole one. We actually specifically designed it, you know, we talked about having it closer, but again, when he mentioned, this is an area that we wanted to preserve, and one of our first iterations of this, this particular map had some holes going through there, so we took that away. So, you know, a unique feature would be that most of the activities that would, you know, have to do with more adults, would be, would be farther away from the education centers.
Nice job.
I have a couple more things. So we want to keep this as natural as possible, outhouses?
Restrooms? Restrooms?
Restrooms.
Actually, that is something that is not included in the plan. There are options, you know, at, at a later time, we could choose to put restrooms up there. That would be quite a significant cost, I think, depending on what type of restrooms. The other thing we can do is we can always, you know, put portable toilets up there. I know that nobody likes those, but, you know, that is potential, if, you know, if the use kind of suggests that that's something, you know, it certainly is an option for us to explore.
Well, I know that Parks and Rec already has a lot of responsibility in town, and a lot of things to maintain. You can't really totally rely on volunteers. And I know that in going to several other areas around the state, call it accidental pollution, but things like plastic cups in the lake, other debris, and so there, I think it's going to be a certain level of maintenance, it's going to be expected by Parks and Rec. And do you feel that you have the existing staff and equipment on hand to handle that?
So as I mentioned before, yes, I think once Darrow Pond, you know, these enhancements happen, I think the use at Darrow Pond would go up, and we would have probably, you know, a bit more maintenance to do on a daily basis. a bit more maintenance to do on a daily basis in terms of trash removal or, you know, if we did have a restroom up there servicing the restrooms. But yes, and even to maintain, you know, the disc golf course or to maintain the trails or, you know, fix a loose board on something, yeah, that does take additional staff time and that would be something that we would be looking for in, in our operational budget to, you know, to support that moving forward, yes.
Has any been, any thought been given to selling passes such as we do for the beaches? Do you raise money to keep this operating?
So, that is, that's not something that the subcommittee has discussed. It could be an option if, if that were the case, there are, you know, the question there would be, you know, who's, who's going to monitor that and do you pay somebody up there to, to, you know, let people in and out? There's expense to doing that and do the passes generate enough to pay for the expense to kind of police that or monitor that? That would be a, you know, a question, it's, it's not out of the realm of possibilities, but it's something that we haven't discussed at this time. In fact, the, you know, the, the current thinking or the predominant thinking, I think, on the committee members would be that it's, it's an open park, that's, you know, it's open and available to the public during daylight hours and you're, it's, you're free to use it, use it respectfully, put your trash in a container or take it home or what have you, but take care of it.
But there's no way to close this property off, so you're going to have after-hours activity there as we have had in the past, which is not the kind of nighttime activity that we would like to have. It's a little more recreational than we might like.
I think one of the key points of, of discussion that the subcommittee has had is that the more legitimate use this property has, the less illegitimate use of the property you're going to have. You know, if people don't feel they can go up there and, and, and not be caught doing something that they shouldn't be doing, you know, the more people that go up there using it appropriately, we'll, you know, the, the subcommittee discuss that at length, you know, that that increased appropriate use is going to benefit the property.
Yes, thank you. So, I, I tend to agree with you on increased appropriate use and we, I know you've had those discussions on some of the other properties in town, Brett's Park and other areas, having 24-hour use by the public maybe diminishes the chance for vandalism and those things that you're, you're guarding against. It seems like you've really made a great effort to, you know, really have it be passive use rather than active development and I think that's appreciated. Distinguished former, you have the, the heavy shaded green area outlined by the, the dark lines, that's the, that's the 100 acres that you, that you have Parks and Rec.
Yes. The, the entire, pretty much the whole green area on the map is Darryl Pond property that the town owns and that's 300 acres. 100 acres in the dark green is the area that is not covered by an easement and that is the area that the Board of Selectment has given Parks and Recreation specific control to manage.
So, the other area in the lighter shaded green, that's protected by the conservation easement?
Yes.
And then within that area, I see the red dotted lines, are those existing trails? What are those?
No, the, the, as Phil mentioned, the, the red dashed lines that you'll see, that is proposed trails to make a trail loop and developing trails in the light green portion is consistent with the easement use, so that, that doesn't conflict. I, I think, you know, the easement wouldn't allow us to probably put a parking lot or, you know, maybe some of the other stuff in there, but trails, trails, you know, exist in that area now and, you know, developing trails consistent with that use is something that, that we expect will happen.
So, in the area that's still protected by the conservation easement and where there are existing trails that have just been there for years, what, what you foresee is enhancing those, that trail system in a way that's consistent with what's already there and it, and it, you can reconcile that with the, with the conservation easement.
That is absolutely correct.
And then the dark, look like the dark black lines, are those existing roads through there or what are those?
Yeah, those are, those are existing trails and, and some of them at one point were roads. There's, there's a road to the cell tower that goes out there, the cell tower, actually it's, I guess we don't have it on this map here, but.
Where that.
Okay, yeah, the road that goes out to the cell tower, that really is, I mean, it's wide enough to drive a, a, you know, a truck down, but there are other trails that aren't quite as big, so, you know, the, the black lines are existing trails and some may be wider or narrower than others, but, yeah.
And then my, one other question, as you talked about the, the jump practice area for mountain bikes, is there a policy or have you talked about a policy about e-bikes? That's a big thing now and what is your position on that?
That's something, we, we haven't made a decision on that, we haven't really crossed that, that road. I know that the, you know, the Friends of Oswegon Hills are, are doing some work on that and so I'm sure we'll be consulting with them about what they're doing and, and, you know, making an appropriate determination at that, you know, when, when the time comes to, you know, post, you know, some rules or post, you know, what, what's allowed, what's not allowed.
Yeah, I guess the concern is the torque that they develop and.
And that can tear up the trails.
Disturbing the trails and erosion. Those are some of the issues that you'll have to confront and however you come out on it. It's very interesting, I mean, I, I do share the concerns of nice to keep it as natural as possible, but then at the same time, you know, we have this land, it's available, we do want to make, to the extent that we can, make it available for people to live here to really enjoy and it's a beautiful spot and I think you've done carefully and it really appears that you've considered a lot of things in development of this plan, which I, I was happy to see, particularly the little bunny rabbits, the whitetail, what are they called?
Doing like cottontail.
Yeah, cottontail, that's good, you know, I'm glad that you, you considered that seriously and to make some changes, that's important stuff. Thank you for your presentation, very informative and looks like everybody's done a really nice job on this. When, when, when would it's, when will we be trying to start, you know, phase one? How far away are we from that if, if it's a go?
Yeah, like I mentioned earlier, I, I anticipate asking for funding for phase one in the FYE 2025 budget, so the Board of Selectmen, well, assuming the first selectman agrees, we'll see a proposal for phase one of Darryl Pond enhancements.
Great, thank you, Jerry.
So, I just have one other thing, because I'm still not clear on the undeveloped protected area. Are you saying that there are trails there already?
Yes, in fact, the Goodwin Trail, that, that dark green line, the Goodwin Trail goes right through, yeah, the.
I would be concerned about having that enhanced further, that's supposed to be reserved and protected.
Correct. The, the folks that hold the easement, we've had discussions with them and they are fully supportive of developing a trail loop in there in a way that is consistent with the easement.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? You good on that one? Okay.
Very good, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next is the, we have the Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaptation Plan. Do we have a motion?
Yep, move the following. Whereas the Town of East Line has historically experienced severe damage from natural hazards and it continues to be vulnerable to the effects of those natural hazards profiled in the plan, i.e. flooding, extreme heat, droughts, severe storms such as thunderstorms and winter storms, dam failures, wildfires and earthquakes resulting in loss of property and life, economic hardship and threats to public health and safety. And whereas the East Line Board of Selectmen approved the previous versions of the Hazard Mitigation Plan in 2005, 2012 and 2018. And whereas Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, whom the Town of East Line is a member, has determined that climate change is affecting the frequency and severity of some hazards and therefore elected to expand the Hazard Mitigation Plan update to become a, to become a Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaptation Plan update. And whereas committee meetings were held and public input was sought in 2022 regarding the development and review of the Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaptation Plan update. And whereas the plan specifically addresses hazard mitigation and climate adaptation strategies and plan maintenance procedures for the Town of East Line. And whereas the plan recommends several hazard mitigation actions that will provide mitigation for specific natural hazards that impact the Town of East Line with the effect of protecting people and property from loss associated with those hazards while adapting to the effects of climate change. And whereas Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments has developed and received conditional approval from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for its Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaptation Plan update under the requirements of 44 CFR 201.6. And whereas adoption of this plan will make the Town of East Line eligible for funding to alleviate the impacts of future hazards now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen. One, the plan is hereby adopted as an official plan of the Town of East Line. Two, the respective officials identified in the mitigation strategy of the plan are hereby directed to pursue implementation of the recommended actions assigned to them. Three, future revisions and plan maintenance required by 44 CFR 201.6 and FEMA are hereby adopted as a part of this resolution for a period of five years from the date of this resolution. Four, an annual report on the progress of the implementation elements of the plan shall be presented to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thank you for reading that.
Sure.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, thank you, Candace. Any, any discussion on this, any further discussion? Well, I'm certainly in favor of approving it. I will only say, you know, I, I took some time really studying it and there was one thing that really jumped out at me and it was looking at the, the status of the various dams that we have in town and there was one dam in the Patagonia Lake that really, if it were to fail, would really be catastrophic for the town. That water, it's a substantial body of water and it's going to want to get, work its way down to Long Island Sound and it'll end up going underneath Route 156 past Charlie's Place, it would impact Anick Center School, the middle school, a lot of the neighborhoods on its, its pathway to the water. So, that really jumped out at me as being a potential catastrophic threat. I mean, we just had this thing happen with the seawall, we're going to get to it in a few minutes, but you just don't know what things are going to happen. So, I'm glad we have that report, it's certainly worth looking at. I think we should find out, you know, if the State of Connecticut is monitoring that dam and how often and let's, let's keep an eye on that and keep it on our watch list, so.
We have another dam that's in poor condition too, in the northern, in the northern, on the way to Salem and there should be some documentation in the records because there's been studied, done of those dams under previous administrations, we've discussed it and the money just hasn't been forthcoming.
Well, I think we have to look at that and that's something that could really impact our town.
The town forum could probably help, but I, I bet the chairman will probably discuss it.
I see that several of the dams are owned, are part of private land, does that complicate matters in terms of?
Probably would, yeah. I think this regular dam, it's rated B and it's State of Connecticut, it's on their watch list, so.
So, our insurance company makes us get inspection reports on our dams? Is Joe behind me?
He is.
Joe, is it five year, five years or 10 years? Every five years our dams get inspected, so if it's a town-owned dam or a state-owned dam, I believe they're inspected. So, we just had to send the reports to our insurance company this month so I could, I'll forward them to you, the most recent ones, yeah.
Yeah, just, I don't know.
We just put in a Steve grant, it's my understanding, we received that Steve grant to replace. I know you want to talk.
Joe Brugoff, Public Works Director. We did put in a Steve grant for the, the Plant's Dam, you can see that dam and that, that, I know the other dams you're talking about, but the Plant's Dam one is in actually very rough shape, it's been actually on the town budget to try to study it, so we, as my understanding, we received, we received a $500,000 Steve grant to replace that grant, that dam, so that was very helpful and by, by accepting this, approving this hazard mitigation, we can accept money like these, so.
There we go.
Just, it all ties together.
It does.
Yes, it does.
Is, is Plant's Dam in here?
I think it's one of the.
Or is it called something else?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a municipally owned one.
It's on the.
Patagonia?
It should be on it.
It is.
Okay.
It's town property.
Oh, okay, all right, I see it's on the list, it just wasn't, yeah, okay.
Any further discussion?
So, just one quick one, so all of the dams have to be checked out, you said, every five years?
Yeah.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anything further on this? All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. I'm going to jump around just a little bit, it's kind of getting late, Joe, but we're going to go to E so that you can, if that's okay, we'll just move to, then we'll go back. E was the item that we added to the agenda and that was to approve emergency work to be done on the seawalls in the Cooks Beach.
Well, it's kind of funny because storms don't follow town agendas and budgets and so, sorry that, thank you for adding this on and we're all trying to work together and I, I will put a footnote beforehand, I will answer as best to questions, but this is all, I mean, as everyone knows, a storm happened on Monday and now we're Wednesday, right, and we're in front of you, so. And probably a lot of you have seen it, but if you haven't, that's why I gave you guys 11 by 17. The top here is back in the storm from Thanksgiving and it did a lot more damage to the, the private seawalls, but at the time, the, the retaining wall on, on the south side of McCook's basically kind of gave in, but it kind of rotated just a little bit, so at the time we went in and packed it with stone and just wanted, more so so that the residents that think it's, you know, want to see all the stuff, don't fall in the hole, because it was about a four-foot hole. So, we packed it in and, you know, packed it right to the top, worked with Parks and Rec, but little did we know that three weeks later, you know, we're up against it. It, it's amazing and I've been working here 10 years, it, it didn't seem like that big of a storm, actually, what was it, last week we were getting emails all Sunday long about this, this storm that had nothing and then, the next week, you know, this week, we had this roll in and, you know, I was driving into work on Monday morning seeing these, you know, 30-foot waves or, not 30-foot waves, the waves hitting and spraying all over and because the wall was already damaged, ours just flopped in, so this was Thanksgiving, right by Thanksgiving, this is now, so we basically lost about 30 feet of the parking lot. So, I'm here to tell you tonight, we're looking just for emergency funds to go out there and temporarily, temporarily protect this because the right thing to do, and interesting enough, the wall is just, just direction, just south as you head into Crescent Beach, is intact because it's built properly and that's what we need to do, that what it is, just the difference between that wall and the other ones is that one has sheet piling that's driven into the ground 20 feet, that's what we need to do. If we were to try to say, okay, let's do the sheet piling right now, we're talking at least between $90,000 to $120,000, I'm just throwing numbers, but it's not, so I'd hate to come in before you say, hey, can I have $100,000 and do it next week? The better way to do is temporary do it, temporarily, so what we're looking to do with this money is come in and dig out, dig out this area and put some big concrete blocks, each block we can get is probably about 4,000 pounds, but a two-by-two by six foot long and build a, build us a temporary wall and kind of bind it together, so it just protects so that we don't lose any more of the parking lot if we, don't do anything, next time a storm comes in, you could lose 40 more feet or 50 more feet, there's nothing stopping it, so that's the temporary measures, is just, just do that. We're not going to spend $25,000, we're going to spend whatever we need to do, as minimal we need to do to protect it for now. The goal would be in our department then could just get our breath and just try to get a design to get out to bid, to get some numbers, to come back to you guys, say this is how much it costs, but I'm just, for warning you, it's probably going to be between $175,000 and $300,000, depending on what ends up, typically those kind of walls are about between $2,000 and $2,500 linear foot, just because you're going to get made, just the sheet piles alone are going to be 20-foot sheets that are driven into the sand and that's the way. And actually, this is the construction that the boardwalk, the new boardwalk, the good boardwalk is done and that's why, that's, that's staying there is because the sheets are driven down, but the, all the walls that collapsed just were sitting on sand, so they, they just fell over, so. That's where I hear, you know, obviously if you hadn't seen it, that's what it is, we're, I think we're on ABC News, I was getting a text as we were here, I guess Channel 3's coming tomorrow and they're trying to have someone talk, I'm not going to be the one, but hopefully, but maybe they can talk to Dan, you're a handsome guy.
I have a page on that wall, about 10 minutes before it's.
Channel 3 is looking to talk to probably you tomorrow, so we'd like to get going and try to at least, it's my understanding that, and I appreciate all the setting aside if they, if it goes past here and a Board of Finance and a town, me and January 3rd, but.
We have things lined up. We have things lined up.
We'll do everything we can to make sure we ensure that we don't lose any more of our park down there.
Twenty-five will do it for right now?
Yeah, yeah, for the temporary measures, it should be, it should be fine. And any expenditures, we'll go through the first selectman and let him know, just, we just need to do it and we don't have the funds to do it, so.
I think that we're gonna be eligible for more grant money. New England was, New England was really hit hard by this storm and I think federal government's gonna be leasing extra money. I talked to my sister tonight in Maine, they haven't had power for three days.
Okay.
They can't, they can't get, there's so many trees down and Maine Power Company has called in over, over three thousand workers, electrical workers to try to get trees off the wires and things. So, I think that the twenty-five thousand dollars, I think is, I think we're gonna be eligible for.
Yeah, the chief of state asked us to give us just rough estimates of damage and just down there, and we would, we put damage estimates of private properties 'cause all those seawalls and we gave them, I think it's one point seven million dollars, 'cause, I mean, there's about, I think, five hundred feet of seawall that has to be repaired, so that adds up at two thousand, you know, twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars of linear foot. It adds up very quickly, so we will do everything we can to put in FEMA dollars if that, if that is a named storm. I just, I think East Line got it worse than all the other area towns around here, but in other states, I'm sure it's.
So, in order for FEMA reimbursement, I believe the county has to have enough damage.
It's county-based.
That's what I was kinda alluding to. So, every county has to have enough damage to trigger the.
I don't know if New London County really, besides us, really got much, but that, hey, we'll put in the numbers and.
We're gonna, we'll do a reporting, just like same reporting.
We actually did reach out to Kerm as well, our insurance company, but they typically don't cover.
Well, we reached out to them before the wall fell over. If you remember, we reached out the day after that wall cracked and then we talked to the Board of Finance about it and then the wall fell over the next week.
Yeah.
So, it's still not covered, but.
And we've gotten good cooperation from the state of Connecticut, from the governor's office, from Holly Cheeseman, from Martha Marks, whatever they can do to help in the permitting process, approvals of the EEP and whatever they can do in Hartford to help us, they're willing to do, they understand, predicament we're in.
So, if the storm does get declared a disaster, hazard mitigation money, on top of the actual cleanup expense, there's additional funding to mitigate any disaster that happened. That would be a great use of funds if it gets declared a disaster, but.
Let's see what, let's see what we can do.
So, I just have a quick question, Joe. So, you're gonna do the temporary now, when do you like, timing-wise, see that you would do the more permanent?
The permanent.
Yeah, like in the spring or?
Yeah, late spring. I mean, obviously, it'd be nice to be done before summer, it just, you know, it's between now and the summer is gonna be very quickly of getting the, it out to bid and getting, you know, getting contractors on board, getting contracts in place, securing the funds, you know, 'cause it's all a process, but the goal would be probably late spring to do it.
But the wheels are already turning.
Yeah.
And, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Well, we have a.
Hold it to me, sorry. Okay, move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of twenty-five thousand remaining unexpendable American Rescue Funds to a new ARPA account, eighty-five dash seventy dash zero zero eight dash seven hundred dash eight oh two, quote, McCooks Beach Seawall, end quote, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
I'll second.
Do I have a second? Second, Candace. All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Joe, thank you and thank you for all the work. I mean, you guys just turned down the juice and got everything running.
We had the skids here who were pushing all the rocks back whenever a meeting went out and then pushing it, it was amazing.
Well, you guys did a great job and you were right there on target and then, you know, helping us schedule the meetings and, you know, stepping us through this, so thank you again and Kevin as well. A team effort here, so.
Dan, can I make one just comment about contingency and funding for it?
Yes, please.
The full cost of the wall? So, I've reached out to Bond Counsel and their financial advisor to talk to them about the potential. I think that if it's gonna be, you know, a quarter of a million dollars, I think our best bet isn't to hit our contingency, you know, halfway through the year. I think best bet would be to go get authorization to bond. We don't need the money because we have enough, I think we have enough to cover, I'll have to do a cash flow analysis, but I think as long as we get the resolutions to go out to bond, we'll cover it, you know, with the cash we have internally and then we go out to bond during the normal course in August, we'll just incorporate that into the bond.
Pay ourselves back.
And pay ourselves back, yep.
Dan, and I think, I think it's important to make in the motion that this is mitigation, this is not, this is not a fix.
No, it's, yeah, no.
So, the public doesn't think we're gonna get this thing fixed for twenty-five thousand dollars?
No, we're, let's see, do you have the?
Okay, so I just moved to approve a special appropriation of the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, I could say for a temporary fix.
To stop further erosion.
To stop further erosion.
To stop further erosion, why don't you amend it?
You okay with that, Joe, or not?
Absolutely. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you.
I'll resecond myself.
Okay.
Just stops further erosion, okay.
No, that's good because we want the public to understand what we're doing.
Sure.
Good call.
Sandy, did you get that? Okay.
Okay. And you've seconded it again?
So, if I amended it, then you seconded it?
As amended.
And we have to revote then.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so the, the motion as amended carries. Thank you again. All right, back up to item C, appoint a Board of Selectmen members to meet with non-affiliated group representatives. So, typically in the past, subset of the Board has negotiated with non-affiliated group representatives.
You've discussed.
You've discussed it.
Not, not negotiated.
Not negotiated, I used the wrong term, discussed, I'm sorry. And so, I can't be a part of it because I actually sort of fit into that group, so I can't really be there. But, but I'm gonna suggest, if we could, Roseanne, would you be willing to serve?
Yes, I would.
And Don, would you be willing to serve?
Sure.
And Ann, would you?
Sure.
Okay, well then, do we need a motion?
Yeah, I have it right here. Yeah, let me just write the names in. Okay. Move to appoint Board of Selectmen members to meet with non-affiliated group representatives. Move to appoint Roseanne Hardy, Don McKenzie, and Ann Chakello to meet with the non-affiliated employees group representatives to, since you negotiate, but I guess, what did you say, Roseanne? To discuss, to discuss the upcoming fiscal year salary and benefits.
Do I hear a second? Okay, Candace, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain because I'm involved.
Okay.
Yep. All right, and we have some appointments.
Okay.
Board of Commissions.
All right, here we go. Move to appoint Ellie Greenberg of fifty-seven Arbor Crossing East Line to serve as a representative on the Eastern Regional Tourism District Board of Directors on behalf of the town of East Line with a term to expire on December seventh, twenty twenty-six.
Do I hear a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Ann Daigle of five Riverhead Lane, East Line to serve as a member on the Youth, Family and Human Services Commission on behalf of the town of East Line with a term to expire on January seventh, twenty thirty.
Do I hear a second?
I will second.
Candace, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move to appoint Donald Hall of forty-three Cardinal Road, East Line to serve as a member on the Youth, Family and Human Services Commission on behalf of the town of East Line with a term to expire on January seventh, twenty thirty.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We'll give, we'll give this one to Roseanne.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Pat Larkin of fourteen Oak Hill Drive, East Line to serve as a member on the Youth, Family and Human Services Commission on behalf of the town of East Line with a term to expire on January seventh, twenty thirty.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to appoint Jamie Shelburne of thirty-one McElaney Drive, Nyanic to serve as a member on the Youth, Family and Human Services Commission on behalf of the town of East Line with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
I'll second. All in favor?
Wait, can I just ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Those other ones were twenty thirty, this one's twenty twenty-eight, is, was that an error or is that supposed to be like that?
It's not, it's.
Staggered.
Oh, okay, all right, just so I know.
Dan, really quickly, can we amend it to actually reflect Jamie's correct name?
Isn't it Jamie Barshelburn? Is that what you want?
Yes, please.
Yes. And that's B-A-R-R?
Yes.
Okay, got it. All right, you said.
Yeah, and then as amended, I'll, I'll second.
Okay.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Jennifer Brush, forty-nine Spring Rack Road, East Line to serve as a member on the Youth, Family and Human Services Commission on behalf of the town of East Line with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All abstain.
Okay.
She's my neighbor.
All right, we have one of extension and.
Last one, move to appoint Margaret.
I'll just, so, motion carries.
Oh, yeah, motion carries, sorry. Jumped on the gun there. Okay. Move to appoint Margaret Chiapori of thirty-nine Upper Patagonic Road, Unit Six, East Line to serve as a member on the Youth, Family and Human Services Commission on behalf of the town of East Line with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Candace. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that's it for the appointments.
Dan, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Will you be appointing an ex officio for that commission?
For which?
For the youth and family.
Uh, yeah.
Or will that be encompassed into Park and Rack and youth services that I'm already on? I'm just curious.
Yeah, you know what, let me, let me think about that. I don't, yeah, I'm not sure if we should have an ex officio and then, let me look at who we appointed, I don't have my.
I'm appointed for the Park and Rack already and the youth services and I would be interested in being appointed to it, so just so you know, I could take it into consideration.
All right, yes, of course, absolutely, yeah. Okay, with that, ex officio reports.
I'm leaving it off.
Yeah, sure.
I don't have very much this evening, I think most of our meetings have been taken up with appointing chairs and secretaries, so I don't have anything really urgent we need to bring up tonight and I'm assuming that the town clerk will follow, will forward to Sandy an overall list of who's been appointed as chairs and secretary of various commissions. And I'd also like to suggest that we have a way to contact the town hall if we are unable or have an emergency at the last minute and cannot make a meeting specifically if it's a, especially if it's a meeting that we were supposed to report at. I had a situation last week when I was asked to cover for somebody else and I didn't realize until the very last minute that I could not, I couldn't make it and there was no way to contact anybody. We don't have cell phone numbers of commission members, so I wonder if commission members, townwide, would be willing to give for a master list of cell phone numbers, particularly for Borgin's commissions, so that we have somebody that we can contact to say, you know, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to, you know, I'm supposed to speak at this meeting, but I can't get there.
Thank you, welcome to that, see how we.
I don't think it's a problem if people volunteer, or at least maybe the chair would volunteer to have other members of the commission have.
Share their phone numbers with other members, that might be, there's a couple ways to maybe accomplish that, let's.
Because there's nobody here that can take an emergency call after, after hours. You can't reach the custodian and most people silence, well, I don't know if that would work, 'cause most people silence their cell phones.
Let's think about this, see if we can come up with. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you, Roseanne. Jason?
I attended the Harbor Management Shellfish Commission yesterday and pretty unremarkable, just kinda tying up some loose ends. There was an item that was brought before me, they asked me to take an application seeking authorization to place a marker south of the bridge stating a posted speed limit of six, I guess, miles per hour, knots, I don't know what it was, but they need your signature on it, so I told them I would bring it here today. I don't know the protocol for submitting this, but I have an application here.
Okay, I'll put with the signature file and then take that and I'll sign it.
The Board has a number of resignations and is looking for some new members shortly. I also, I was at the Board of Ed special meeting, but that wasn't really ex officio, so I, I can't really comment too much other than they appointed two new members.
Okay, all right, thank you, Jason. Um, Dan?
I don't have anything to report.
Candace?
Have I been the only one busy? Oh, my goodness, let's see, I'm just joking. Okay, so I went to the East Line Ad-Hoc Committee on Short-Term Rentals on the eleventh, continued discussions, options moving forward. The town attorney was present and was asked to provide some legal guidance. I think that, you know, there are members that are going back and forth in regards to regulations and, and how to do that and what to do and then, of course, what is legal to do and then what could cross constitutional rights, right? So, that's an issue and concern. So, they did set a public hearing for the, for January twenty-ninth at seven PM, no, no, they don't have a time yet. It's tentative for one twenty-nine and then the next meeting will be on January sixteenth at seven PM right here in the conference room. And then the second one, well, does.
Can anybody have any questions on that first?
Yeah, 'cause you said the public hearing is January twenty-ninth and the, after next meeting after that is January sixteenth?
The next meeting is January sixteenth.
Okay.
That they're going to have and they're having a public meeting, town meeting for the twenty-ninth.
Got it, okay.
And that was tentative, but that's what was put out and they said that they would, you know, be putting that out.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, does anybody have any questions or no?
No, I think that covers it.
All right, so the second one was the East Line Parks and Recreation Commission and that was held on December fourteenth. Discussions revolved really around budget priorities and what they would be putting forward and kind of going back and forth on that. They're also talked about putting two members forward, which they just did tonight, which was great, and that's it. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Candace.
You're welcome.
I was out of the state, Jason kindly filled in for me. At the Harbor Manager, a couple of questions, can I ask about his meeting regarding the speed limit sign? I guess they agreed to say six knots, six miles per hour is the limit. There was a lot of discussion going on about, a lot of boats make a wake at six and many There was a lot of discussion going on about, a lot of boats make a wake at six and many don't. You also have to make significant headway, you have to, as a captain, you have to run your own boat. I was hoping the word would be no wakes on, that the wording on the sign, just, just for my own, who, who's gonna take over Harbor Management ex officio? Are you, do you have it?
It is, it is me. And if you give me a moment, I can dig around, there was talk of a no wakes sign, I think the no wakes sign is north of the.
Right.
Bridge and the, the one they want south of the bridge is six knots, not sure what the reasoning was.
Okay. Any further discussion on the Laundergen lease?
Was there discussion about it? There was discussion as far as to say that the legal wranglings have been resolved. I don't think there was much more than that, so.
Well, that's, that's a separate case, okay, thanks, I just following up, I still near and dear kind of, so.
Does the harbor master have to sign off on that as well?
He did sign it.
Or shall I get, Sandy, shall I hand to this, this is for the, the speed, should I put that? Should I hand to that and give it to you and, yeah, okay, I'm gonna put this on, I'll sign it back. Okay, great, thank you, thank you both of you. All right, so anyone else for ex officios besides me? Okay, so I have a report, I, I attended the Board of Finance meeting and I started the meeting as a chair, a temporary chair. And, and then they appointed Denise Hall as their permanent chairperson for the Board of Finance. They did move to, as it sits right now or in the past, the Board of Education made a monthly report to the Board of Finance. They thought that that was probably not necessary to do it every month, so they did make a change and they're gonna ask the Board of Ed to report quarterly rather than monthly. So that was my takeaways from the Board of Finance. I did attend the Police Commission meeting the, the other night and, let's see, it was reported that the light parade, that was the highest attendance of any of the light parades that we've had. And it was the largest crowd and it was the first time that our police force was able to handle the crowd without requesting mutual aid from surrounding municipalities. So I really, that's a, I think, another indicator of the achievement of our police force, that they're sufficiently staffed now, they can handle the largest crowd needing help from Waterford or Mothville. The highway project on Route one seventy, one sixty-one is still keeping the police force extremely busy. As I think everyone knows, they opened up a new exit seventy-four and as part of the, the process of moving forward and, you know, you're seeing right now, this is roughly in round numbers, it's a hundred and fifty million dollar project, you're looking at about thirty million of it right now. So if you think, wait to see what's gonna happen, I mean, there's a lot of work that's gonna be done, there's gonna be a lot of change moving forward, but it's.
And then I understand they're going to do a second phase in Delix at seventy-one and seventy-two.
That's a separate, none of this project, but they're already reviewing, it's sort of on the very preliminary design stages and talking about stages for revamping seventy-one and seventy-two. Yes, that's correct. Let's see, the, our police force has achieved a tier-three accreditation and that's a big deal in police departments. You know, once they got the new public safety complex, they're really able to focus on achieving, going through the tiers, they're, they're tier-three and that's really substantial and to their credit, so I wanted to point that out and really.
What does that mean?
It's, it's a series of requirements that they have to meet and they get accredited for having certain reporting that they can report to the, to the state of Connecticut, having certain equipment, we have body cams now, all of those things. You know, having an adequate facility so that they can do retraining and I, I don't know all the details, but.
Education, I think.
Sure.
Education.
Education, yeah, the various certifications and training with, you know, the weapons and safety and all of that. So they've done a great job and I think we're proud of them for that. And really, you know, I thank Chief Mike Finkelstein, he's done a wonderful job with our police department. There were twenty more arrests so far this year than at the same time last year, so I don't know what you make of that. I think we have seen in the paper, house burglaries and things of that nature, you know, don't leave your keys in your car and button up tight, you know, that's unfortunately, that's the world we live in. And last night I had the pleasure, I was invited to the swearing of the newest police officer for the Town of East Line and I was really happy that they invited me and glad I was there and his family was there, his wife and children and they made a special for him and he was on duty today, so. That's, that's my report to the Police Commission and then, let's see. And also I attended, I'm now the chair of the Water and Sewer Department, go figure that one out, I mean, here I am. Yeah, you can feel thimble with what I know about water, no, I'm gonna learn, I am learning. And, but I'll tell you a couple of things, the meter replacement project is ninety-six percent complete and that's really, that's really important because it lets us know if, you know, if there's a, a big surge somewhere, they can figure it out, it shows right up on their computer and it can tighten up the system so we don't lose water. And they will be looking for, they have some unallocated ARPA funding. We'll see with the wall now what happens with that, but there is, at well five, they have a lagoon. Some of you may recall, we redid well five a couple of years ago and it has exceeded expectations, the amount of draw from that new well, or redone well. But because you have more draw, you need a bigger lagoon to filter the water. And last time I said the word lagoon was watching Gilligan's Island, they have the lagoon, right? That's what everybody thinks of, it's a little Gilligan's Island, but anyhow, the lagoon, so they need to expand that and we will, we'll see where that goes. And if they'll be able to use the ARPA funding or not, if hopefully, we'll see, we'll have to review that. And, and finally, I, that's my ex officio, my report, I went on a field trip to the York Correctional Facility yesterday and it's fascinating. And you know, in some ways, I'm a big physician, it's like a cruise ship in a sense, I mean, they are self-sufficient, I mean, they have, they, they do food, they make their food, they have facilities to treat people with, you know, minor injuries and they really strive for self-sufficiency. But the biggest news over there, and we, it was, we had a presentation here last year, there is a machine shop, aerospace that is going to be on site there with EDM machining, which is used in the aerospace and machining industry. And the inmates there that qualify will get jobs, they'll be paid at the going wage, they'll start off at minimum wage, but then as they increase their skill set and become more valuable, they'll get paid what someone else on the outside would get paid for that level of skills. And then when they're released, the, the state is waiving using that money to pay for their own incarceration as an additional incentive. If you get money and you're incarcerated, you, you know, you have to pay for your hotel room. And, but they're going to waive that, the state is, as an incentive. And this will, you know, help to reduce recidivism, people will have, will get out of there with skills that are needed and it'll be a stream for labor in that area, which is very difficult to attract these days, unfortunately, I think. But, so they'll have a skill set and they, these, this company has other area, you know, divisions in Connecticut where they'll be able to go work and earn a good wage and have a career. So it's a win-win for everybody involved, so I was very excited to, to hear about that. So, so there you go, so that's my report, yes.
Yeah, can I just, I have just a quick question, you said, what skills was it for, you said?
Electro EDM, I think it's electromechanical AMV maybe, electromechanical discharge.
Okay.
But it's, it's a form of machining parts like aerospace and.
Okay.
And maybe submarines to use it. And, but they will learn that skill and they're gonna bring, they're, they have a, a building and they're gonna be bringing in the machines sooner rather than later and get this thing underway, so it's very impressive and so it's a move in the right direction, I think. And finally, I went to the, I attended the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments this morning and it was, I'm finding you're doing, I'm doing a lot of eating in this new job. Everywhere you go, someone's got a meal for me and I don't turn it away, I don't know. So anyhow, and that was very informative, I met some of the, you know, leaders of other towns, Bob Rule was there, introduced myself, yeah, it was great. So, and learning about some of the resources that are available and, you know, people wanna help, so I'm very encouraged and thankful for all the goodwill. And so that's my personal document report, sorry, it's all lengthy, but some things are.
Lot going on.
Yeah.
Can I jump back in?
Yes.
Do you mind?
No.
So just on the Water and Sewer, you were talking about the meter replacement.
Yes.
Plan. What they also said that people might be, should be aware of, there's four percent who have not done their meter changes and they said that there will be a seventy-five dollar charge, I guess, in the next few months if they don't sign up to get it replaced, just. And then the only other thing that came up that I was aware of was there was a vacancy on planning and I guess at the last meeting, there was confusion as to how to appoint somebody to be a regular member. One person was appointed and it was, I guess they did it incorrectly, so town council, basically, they presented to the town council, they wrote a legal brief, researched it and determined that another person was actually the person who should have been appointed. So that's what happened on the plan and commission, so.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I had gotten a copy of the brief, so, so that's it for me.
Correspondence, we did, we did mention earlier that we had a letter from the superintendent of schools, Jeffrey Newton, in support of the Darrow Pond project, so. He thinks it's a real good idea, so I'll point that out. Any public comment? Nothing, you got nothing? All right, no public comment, so there's a very, very brief Slugman's response because there is no public comment. And do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the regular meeting of December twentieth, twenty twenty-three at eight forty P.M.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Great, we are adjourned, motion carries, thank you very much.
You're welcome.